Welcome. Yarra City Council acknowledges the Wurundjeri Woi Brang people as the traditional owners and true sovereigns of the land now known as Yarra. We also acknowledge the significant contributions made by other Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people to the life in Yarra. We pay our respects to elders from all nations and to their elders past, present, and future. Thanks for joining us tonight to learn about sustainable home renovations in heritage areas. I'm Mel Miller-Yule, Sustainability Officer at Yarra City Council. Before we begin, a bit of housekeeping. Tonight's session is being recorded. Next slide, please. Thanks. Your microphone and video are turned off. We have two speakers tonight, and we'll have time for Q and A after each of our speakers. You can pop your questions in the Q and A function throughout the presentations, and we'll read them out to be answered by the presenters during the Q and A time. We prefer if you can use the Q and A function rather than the chat so that everyone can see the questions and answers. We'll try to get through as many questions as possible, but we may not get through all of them tonight. We might also respond directly to your question in writing in the Q and A section, which helps us to get through more questions. If you have a question that isn't answered by the end of the session, you can get in touch with Yarra Council's statutory planning team or the Yarra Energy Foundation afterwards. You can use the chat function for any technical issues or anything you'd like to contribute to the broader conversation, such as useful links. All the links you see on the screen during the presentation will be shared by email at the end of the session. Next slide, please. Thanks. Our speakers tonight are Ruth Redden, Associate at Heritage Consultancy Firm Context GML, and Pete Mercurio, Project Manager at the Yarra Energy Foundation. Ruth will share insights on how to do a sustainable renovation in a heritage area, drawn from 10 years' experience as a registered architect and experience as a heritage planner at city councils, including the city of Yarra. Pete will share information about the Yarra Solar Program and how the Yarra Energy Foundation can connect you with affordable, quality solar energy systems. At the city of Yarra, our climate emergency plan commits to powering our city with 100% renewable energy and achieving zero net emissions across the entire Yarra community by 2030. We're aiming to double the number of households in Yarra with solar energy systems from 9% in 2019 to 18% in 2024. All of council's electricity needs are met by 100% renewable electricity through the Melbourne Renewable Energy Project, and we also have 2,920 solar panels installed on 38 council buildings and six Tesla 2 batteries installed in community facilities. Building a 100% renewable Yarra will take everyone, and you can take part by switching to 100% green power, installing solar, getting off gas and switching to all-electric appliances, and using less energy. When you're renovating, it's a great time to think about the things you can do to switch to 100% renewables. If you're replacing appliances, you can make the switch to all-electric heating, hot water, and cooking. You can make your home more energy efficient and also make your home a lot more comfortable in extreme temperatures with insulation, draft proofing, or double glazing or other window treatments. You can also save energy by choosing energy-efficient appliances, lighting, and building materials. And it's a good time to think about going solar. Two-thirds of Yarra homes are in a heritage overlay, so we've recently waived the application fee for planning applications for solar panels and updated the guidance on our website to make it easier to know how to get solar in a heritage overlay. If the panels won't be visible from a street or a park, you don't need to apply for a planning permit for solar. You could also be eligible for a state government rebate for solar of up to $1,850 and a no-interest loan of up to the same value. You can learn more about how you can switch to 100% renewable energy and see the new guidance for solar in heritage areas at yarracity.vic.gov.au/renewalbyarra. Excuse me. And now I'll introduce our first speaker. Ruth Redden is an associate at Context GML, a heritage consultancy firm based in Melbourne, Sydney, and Canberra. She's a registered architect with over 10 years' experience in architectural design, building conservation, and research. Ruth is passionate about the cultural, environmental, and economic sustainability of historic sites and is an International Specialized Skills Institute Fellow who received funding to research the conservation and environmental sustainability of post-war buildings in New York City. Ruth's heritage planning experience is drawn from previous and current roles as heritage advisor to a number of local government planning departments, including formerly at the city of Yarra. As an architect, Ruth is experienced in developing creative design solutions for historic sites and has extensive training in the science of preserving traditional materials. Prior to joining Context, Ruth was a PhD candidate at Melbourne University and continues to actively research on the topic heritage and sustainability, how to optimize and value the environmental performance of historic buildings. Her latest peer-reviewed article on the subject can be found in the Australasian Journal of Environmental Science. Thanks, Ruth.
Thank you, Mel. Hi, everyone. I hope you can hear me, and I hope you can see my screen. I wonder...
Yes, we can.
Yeah, okay, great. Thanks for that. Okay, I'd also like to acknowledge that I'm presenting on Woi Brang lands, land of the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin Nation, land that was never ceded. Context supports the Uluru statement from the heart, and as an organization, we actively work to advocate for social and cultural justice. I'd also like to acknowledge that tonight's talk is on sustainability and that First Nations people in Australia have sustainably managed land for over 60,000 years. We have much to learn from Australia's First Nations people, and I'd love to hear from anyone who wants to share knowledge in this area. Tonight, I'll be sharing my knowledge about heritage and sustainability. As you heard from Mel, my background is as a registered architect, currently working as a heritage consultant here at Context. I started a PhD on the environmental performance of historic buildings, but I withdrew from that and continue to sit on multiple committees, including Ikmos's National Scientific Committee on Energy and Sustainability. So tonight, I'll be going over topics: historic building sustainability and climate change, the environmental performance of historic buildings, basic principles when renovating an historic building, common issues that you might come across, including thermal insulation, draft proofing, windows and floors, cooling and ventilation, heating, and solar panels. And I'll be using a case study, which will include some economics, like financial information for those who will be wondering. And I'll also provide some resources, and I believe these slides will be available to you later, so hopefully that will be handy. But to just set the scene, the properties that we'll be talking about tonight, well, the topic tonight is are properties that are in heritage overlays. So this is different to properties that are included on the state register. For the most part, most properties in a heritage overlay only have controls on the exterior of the building, so there are only controls on pretty much what you see from the public realm. This can differ depending on the significance of the site, particularly if it's an individually significant site. And the schedule to the heritage overlay will tell you if there are internal controls. But for the most part, properties and heritage overlays only have external controls. If your property is only locally listed, then the city of Yarra is your heritage authority, and that's who you'll apply to for your planning permit. But if your property is on the state register, which you'll be able to see if you look at the schedule to the heritage overlay, Heritage Victoria will be your permit authority. But I'm sure you could still get advice from the city of Yarra. The other thing to note is that there's a big difference between historic 19th-century buildings and early 20th-century buildings versus post-war buildings. 19th-century buildings and early 20th-century buildings were generally constructed without the means of mechanical heating and cooling. They generally included smaller spaces and smaller openings. Buildings were handcrafted and materials were often locally sourced. Whereas with post-war buildings, electricity was readily available so that the introduction of mechanical heating and cooling was more common. There were machine-made products, and things were more kind of easily replaceable into it rather than being repaired. Generally, you find that post-war buildings have much larger floor areas and kind of deep spaces and lots of glazing so that they can be a different kettle of fish. So my talk tonight is predominantly 19th-century and early 20th-century buildings. In terms of framing sustainability, the United Nations Brantland Report in 1987 defined sustainable development. This is the first time that the connection between culture and the environment was intertwined. There was an acknowledgement that culture is often connected to nature, particularly for First Nations people. And since that time, our understanding of sustainability has changed. And today, we rely predominantly on the UNESCO Sustainable Development Goals. In my area of building conservation, heritage conservation, I'm particularly interested in Sustainable Development Goal Number 11, which is related to sustainable cities and communities, and Sustainable Development Goal Number 12, which is the responsible consumption is responsible consumption and production. So yes, Sustainability Development Goal 11.4, 11.4 relates to strengthening efforts to protect and safeguard the world's cultural and natural heritage. So when I talk about sustainability, I try and keep in mind all of these 17 goals as defined by UNESCO Sustainable Development Goals. I'm looking, I often look beyond operational performance and energy, and I'd like to consider all of these factors. I'd also like to acknowledge that First Nations people have lived on the land for over 60,000 years, and we've got so much to learn from Aboriginal culture, and we need to make more of an effort to listen. A lot of that, as most of you probably know, a lot of that kind of information has been set out in this amazing book by Bruce Pascoe called Dark Eme. And if you haven't read that, I can highly recommend that. It's a, it really kind of puts into context how much of our knowledge is post-contact knowledge and framed in a Western mindset, whereas there's so much other knowledge that we could be learning from. There's also a fantastic book, which I can highly recommend by Vita Lerman, called Sustainable Building Design: Learning from 19th-Century Innovations. And it's a study of many 19th-century buildings and the traditional knowledge that was embedded in those buildings in regard to sustainability. So before mechanical heating and cooling were introduced and particularly passive ways of introducing ventilation, which obviously in times of a pandemic is a big consideration. So I mean, my point basically is there's a lot that we don't have to reinvent. There's a lot of traditional knowledge that we can actually draw upon. And this area of thermodynamics is particularly interesting to me. And this applies to large institutional buildings like town halls and libraries, but it can also apply to small residential buildings. How do historic buildings and climate change kind of fit in together? Well, the World Health Organization has ranked climate change-related events as the number-one risk in likelihood for the past five years. Climate change-related events have been listed as one of the top five risks by impact for the past nine years. So obviously, impacts of climate change, sorry, climate change impacts, extreme weather events, etc., are going to impact historic buildings too. In Australia, we're likely to see heavy rainfall events followed by long dry spells. Rising sea levels is recently seen in New South Wales, which can damage buildings and whole streetscapes and towns. We often see extreme rainfall, which damages buildings or bushfires after long dry spells. And then even, you know, bouts of snow that our buildings aren't kind of built to manage. So these are all kind of new and extreme events that our buildings are going to have to be able to withstand. In terms of where historic buildings fit into the climate change picture, retrofitting existing building stock is a key emission, is key to a low-emission future, as reported by the IPCC AR5 report. Existing buildings constitute 98% of Australia's building stock, and more than 160,000 places in Victoria alone are included in a heritage overlay. Buildings account for 32% of total end-energy use, and carbon dioxide makes up 65% of global anthropogenic greenhouse gas emissions. So you can see that there's a real need when we've got 98% of our building stock to have a look at our existing buildings and particularly our domestic dwellings and work on their operational performance. And I would now like to go through the different ways in which historic buildings can contribute to addressing climate change issues. So whilst operational performance and energy consumption is a big issue, that's just one issue that restoring a historic building can contribute to. That's only one way in which we can help in this space. Beyond operational performance issues, there are also issues in environmental sustainability related to resource depletion, embodied carbon pollution, and material waste. In particular, in Australia, 44% of waste in Australian landfill is from the construction industry alone. So if you think, we have to start thinking of sustainability in a more holistic kind of whole-of-life way. We can't just focus on the operational performance factors because with buildings, you've got environmental impacts associated with extracting materials and resources from the environment to manufacture materials, to transporting it on-site, then constructing your building, then operating your building and maintaining it, and then demolishing it and then disposing of those materials. So historic buildings can play a large role in this cycle and in reducing the impacts at each stage of this cycle because obviously you're not extracting new materials from the environment to build a new building. You're not having to manufacture a large amount of materials. Hopefully, you're only replacing sections of the building. And yes, so that whole, the whole system is improved by retaining an existing building. Other benefits of a historic building is that traditionally, the older materials were made with, they have low embodied energy because the materials, like a brick, could have been locally made. It wasn't necessarily made overseas and then transported over to Australia. And the other thing to consider, of course, when sourcing materials are other sustainability factors such as slavery. So when a material is locally made, at least you have more insurance about where the product has come from. The traditional materials are generally repairable, and there's a, you know, thousands of years of knowledge around how to repair materials rather than a lot of kind of post-war materials that were machine-made and were made to be disposed of when they break down. A lot of traditional materials such as lime plaster and renders and paints were low in volatile organic compounds, so they're generally healthier for the environment and your living conditions. And these traditional materials can be made today and perform just as well as they did 150 years ago when they were first put on your building. So some of the basic principles when conserving a historic building. One of the biggest things to remember is that you need to let your historic fabric breathe. So prior to modern construction, which has kind of been designed to repel water and everything's kind of hermetically sealed, prior to this, buildings were made so that elements were sacrificial. So rain would hit a building, and it was expected that the materials would absorb the moisture, and then they were meant to be allowed to dry out as well. Ventilation was always key, so often you would, well, sometimes you see a slab on ground, but a lot of the time, you'd also see larger underfloors which were vented so that that whole area could remain dry. But often what we've done in renovating our historic properties, we've come along and we've put on kind of acrylic materials or hard materials like cement that stops this process from working. So what ends up happening is your bricks become quite soft because they've absorbed all of that water rather than being able to repel it. Or you might find you get internal damp issues because that water was not able to dry out, dry out of the wall, and it's trying to escape internally. Same thing can happen when you put acrylic paint on a building, on a historic building. So the traditional lime mortar would have sucked up a lot of that water and expelled it from the bricks. Whereas if you've put in a cement mortar and you've put acrylic paint on it, there's no opportunity for that water to go anywhere except into the brick and make it soft. I'm not explaining that as well as someone like David Young could, who has produced this document called Soltech and Rising Damp, and that's available on the Heritage Victoria website. So I can highly recommend that you read into that area, particularly if you've got a brick building that you're wanting to renovate. Another important principle to follow is to do as much as necessary but as little as possible. The Borough Charter is our leading heritage kind of guideline in Australia, and the whole principle is, you know, touch the earth lightly. Do as much as necessary but as little as possible. So in order to do this, gathering information is going to be really important, and you could pay a lot of money to get a consultant to do that investigating, investigation for you, or you could do, take simple measures like you can buy infrared sensors from like Bunnings and use those to ascertain where you've got a lot of draft coming in or you've got damp issues. For those who are particularly interested in ensuring that their buildings are draft-proof, there are much easier ways these days of doing that. There's pulse testing systems, which are quite small, they can fit in a room, and they measure air tightness, yeah, air tightness within a room, and they can tell you whether it's a drafty room or not. So, and another option is to do blow testing, but that's a kind of older method. This pulse testing is kind of easier and becoming more popular. So I hope that kind of like sets the scene that there's a lot to consider when you're restoring a historic building. It's not just the environmental, well, not just the operational performance of the building that you should be considering. We should also consider the whole lifecycle of the building and the materials and where they've come from, and also the historic integrity of the property. What is the significance of the site, and what is it that we're trying to preserve? So common issues that you might come across include needing to improve the thermal insulation of ceilings, walls, and floors. This can retrospectively, insulation can retrospectively be applied to a historic building. As I said earlier, a lot of properties don't have internal controls, so you could essentially strip out as much of the interior fabric as you need or want to, depending on how much of the historic fabric you'd like to retain, original historic fabric, because you can always restore it or reconstruct it. So there are a million different type of insulation options that you could get for your walls, and a lot of them are low in volatile organic compounds. They can come from renewable sources like jute wool, paper, recycled paper, or hemp. Another factor that you might want to consider is fire retardness. So in, and of course, breathability is an issue, as I mentioned before. So a lot of these natural materials are actually quite good for historic buildings because they still allow some of that breathability, but they also work very efficiently. Windows, double-glazing windows is often an issue. As you can see, on the left-hand side, we've got a traditional window glazing. We've got traditional window glazing, and the bars that hold it, you can see in the bottom left-hand picture that traditionally mullions are quite thin and delicate. So it makes it quite hard to put an extra layer of glass in there. It can be done depending on the thickness of the mullion, and there are specialists, sash specialists that can do this. Some people try and replace the window in a way that they intend to be like-for-like, but actually, the result is a window that looks quite different. So in the middle picture there, you can see that the mullions in that framing actually look much thicker, and that's because they have to hold an additional pane of glass. So it is worth seeking a contractor that is not only willing to do the job but able to do this, which is, it can be quite tricky, but it is possible, and there are tradespeople in Melbourne who can do that. So the picture on the far right shows you what a traditional window frame or the mullions in the window frame might look like if they had double glazing in them. If double glazing is not an option for you, you could consider using a low-e glass because low-e glass is a single pane of glass that could fit within the rebate. The environmental performance isn't as great, the U-values aren't as great as a double-glazed window, but they can certainly be improved. The only, one of the main things to consider with low-e glass, however, is the appearance of the glass because a lot of them come with a film on them, so you could inadvertently dramatically change the appearance of the building as well. You might end up with a lot of green glass, which wouldn't necessarily be the outcome. So that's just something to consider. Another option without touching the original windows at all is to install a secondary window system. So this creates a similar effect to having double glazing, but it means you have to open two windows to use the window. This can be quite useful in situations where you don't want to touch the original windows, particularly if it's a state-listed building and you need to keep the original fabric. One of the main things to remember in this situation is that you want to ensure that the lining, the frames of your secondary glazing align with the frames of your window so that you don't end up with too many frames, as seen from the street front. So in these two images, there's a sliding sash, secondary window behind the original sliding sash. So you would just open that up and down. In the second image, there's a casement secondary window system on the inside of the building, which you would just open up to inside the building and then opening a sash window behind that. Again, these are readily available here in Australia, in Melbourne, in a relatively simple way of double glazing your windows. And they can also provide much better sound insulation as well, if that's required. And then there's good old-fashioned window furnishings. You'll be surprised how much thick curtains and pelmets can improve the performance of your windows. There's also honeycomb blinds, which is a kind of relatively new product on the market for that more contemporary look. So they're kind of thermal blinds that will introduce another layer of thermal protection for your windows. Here, I've just got some information on the different, so U-values give you, that's the measurement of how well a window is or insulation, the thermal performance of that product. So here, you can see that a Victorian-era sash window has a U-value of 4.3. And if you add reflective roller blinds or insulated honeycomb blinds, the U-value goes down, which means that the performance is getting better. Draft-proofing windows and doors, generally if they're drafty... Draft proofing windows and doors, um generally if they're drafty elements, um this can be assisted by adding, so with windows you could add brush seals or you can add new seals to the windows. These can be routed into the window frame by contractors and that's a simple way of reducing um draft through a window. If you've got timber floors, you can easily go down to Bunnings and you can get um rubber kind of um strips that you can roll into the gaps in your floors. Um, or you could also kind of hammer in small wood slivers, which is um something that's easily done if you've got the time and patience to do it, but um it can dramatically improve the the comfortability of a a room. Cooling and ventilation, um good old fashioned windows, you know, um. The book that I mentioned on um nineteenth century and early twentieth century um sustainable design is really interesting in its explanation of how thermodynamics works. I think it makes it um, it's quite user friendly, um and it kind of really brings home how much a building has, traditional buildings were designed to extract hot and um unhealth, like unhealthy air, because there was such a a worry about spreading um, you know, germs. Um, and a lot of these, so like chimneys weren't only used to heat rooms with fires, they were also used to extract old air from a building. Um, fan lights above doors were there um specifically to introduce ventilation. Um, so yes, there are lots of different ways, like vents in your walls. Whilst we these days want to be able to control these items, like you might need to put a chimney balloon into your um fireplace during winter time because you don't actually want that draft. Um, you know, there there was a reason why a lot of these aspects were included in our buildings. Um, and there's a lot of traditional knowledge around there that could help us in introducing fresh air and um making those environments more comfortable. Um, in terms of heating, uh you can install underfloor hydroonic heating on timber floors. Um, again, you'd probably have to take up the floor, but it's internal, so you wouldn't necessarily need a a planning permit from a heritage perspective for that. Um, there are lots of different options um to accommodate uh different spaces within floor joists. Um, because, you know, older buildings, you never know what you're going to get. Um, and a lot of renovations today are reusing existing chimney um chimney stacks and fireplaces and putting in more efficient um potbelly kind of heaters, which um can also be a good idea as well, because then you can reuse the existing chimney stack there. Um, I am conscious of time, so this information on solar panels and where to locate solar panels on the Yarra City Council website. Um, the, we've got guidelines, you guys have got guidelines there um on how to sensitively put solar panels on a historic building, so I won't go over those, no, eh. But I want to um kind of show you a case study building by Zen Architects. Um, it's a Victorian era building, the um, the building inspection report came back and said, your house needs to be demolished, there's no saving it, it's structurally unsound. But the client was intent on keeping it. So um the instructions to the architect were to keep as much of the original fabric as possible, but bring it up to contemporary standards. Um, so this is a fantastic example of where ventilation, oh, sorry, um yeah, ventilation was improved around the whole area of the building so that the underside could breathe. Um, existing materials were, like the facade and the main roof form and the principal walls were all propped during construction so that they could be retained in situ. Um, and insulation was added to the entire building. Um, insulation was put in the roof and the walls and the floors. Underheating, underfloor hydroonic heating was put in the floors. Um. What else did they do? They, um, the original chimney and the um the breast below was um retained. All of the original framing was plumbed when necessary, so um new studs were put alongside old studs, just to make sure that the building was structurally sound. In the roof, they also added um new, new props, uh sorry, new um rafters and bearers would alongside the existing ones to make sure that the roof could hold new solar panels um at the end of the renovation as well. Um, so these are some after shots of the building. Oh, they also upgraded their existing windows with low E glass rather than the double glazing um and put extendable awnings on the western side of the building that, uh sorry, retractable awnings that um, you know, can be operated manually as on as neat basis. Um, the roof was replaced with heritage grade Zed six hundred, um which is the preferred material in heritage overlay areas. Um, and as you can see in those two central images, the end result was a really beautifully designed contemporary home, which functions extremely efficiently with and extremely comfortably. But a lot of the period details were retained and specifically from the exterior, the building, the principal roof form and the the um facade of the building and the the side walls were all restored. Um, so the building is gonna sit there for another couple hundred years, hopefully. Um, probably one of the questions on a lot of people's mind is how much does it cost? Because often what I hear is, well, it's just going to be too expensive to demolish a house, I mean to renovate a house to the extent that I've just shown in that case study versus demolishing it and building a new building. Um, figures actually show that to do a deep renovation like the one that I just showed in the case study by Zen Architects, you're looking at around three thousand dollars a square meter. Whereas if you demolish a building and build a new green building, it'll cost you about four thousand five hundred a square meter. Um, and you don't have the same environmental um kind of benefits of having avoided all of those embodied impacts in the whole life cycle of the project. Um, I won't go into environment E S D certification because I don't have the time, but um it is quite hard to get a certification that will look into all of the life cycle aspects of um a project. Um, but one of the good options that kind of is coming out at the um that we're seeing is passive house interfit, um which is a good um sort of like a sustainability um rating scheme that considers the existing building and um also makes it quite a good allowance for ventilation, which is really important for a historic building. So if you're looking, and um I'm sure Yara could do another presentation on um best standards as well and how that works. Um, so sorry, I rushed through that very quickly. Um. If you want more information, there are technical guides on Heritage Victoria's website. I highly recommend this book um called Old House Eco Handbook. It pretty much goes through everything that I've just spoken about tonight. There are also really good technical sheets on um this bad website. And of course, you can always get in contact with me as well if there's anything that I can um help with. Um, yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks Ruth. That was a really interesting and informative presentation. And we have some questions coming through in the Q and A and the chat. Uh, Jane asks, was that pulse testing for drafts? Um, could you speak a little bit more about that for people who aren't familiar with that concept?
Uh, sure. Um, so a lot of sustainability rating schemes require a certain amount of um airflow within a building like ventilation. Um, they either require a a level of ventilation for healthy internal environment purposes. Or they want to know how much airflow you've got to avoid um to to kind of set a base of what um where improvements need to be made in terms of um improving draft and losing um air internally when you don't want to be losing it. So um there are benchmark kind of figures in different sustainability rating schemes that say X amount of um air circulated in a room per minute is a good or bad kind of number. Um, so the pulse machines um go into a room, they 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 do their pulse testing and then they'll give you a number which tells you how much airflow you've got going through that um that room. So then you can use that against your um rating scheme um kind of requirements.
Thanks. Um, Jane also asks, what do you think about triple glazed windows in Australian environments?
Obviously, um, the, they, they're more efficient, they work a lot better and they have lots of benefits. Um, yeah, I I think they're great personally. Um, it's just whether people are willing to pay for them. And um if it's particularly in historic buildings, there's also that issue of whether it's possible to get them into um to your existing windows.
Hmm. Thanks. Um, John asks, what is the typical U value of a nineteenth century house that has not been retrofitted with any of these strategies? I think that might have been in one of your slides.
Let me um go back to that slide and let you know. Um, let me see. Um, got it. Yeah. Four point three.
Thanks. And I remember from that slide that it came down quite a bit with some of the other strategies that had been added. So with the blinds, the um reflecting roller blinds or the honeycomb blinds.
Yeah, yeah, with furnishings like um curtains and also, yeah, there's lots of different ways that you can bring that U value down.
Yeah, great. Um, another question, I've recently used expanding foam and I'm sure it's high VOC. Are there any low voc alternatives for gap sealing?
Yeah, there's a lot. Um, yeah, I I just recommend doing research on um insulation that can be blown into a building. Um, one of the best ones for historic buildings is recycled paper. Um. But I guess one of the issues that you need to be careful of when blowing insulation into a building, particularly into walls um is that it can, like, you're you're blowing it and so it can really expand in certain areas and just explode. Um, so you've got to be quite careful with blow um insulation. But ceilings, less of an issue.
Great, thanks. Um, there's a couple of questions about solar panels. So I know you didn't really have time in your presentation, but maybe now during the Q and A, it's if you'd like to pull those slides up again. Um, there's a question about, um, how do you recommend solar panels are fixed to slate roofs? And another question about the location of so of of solar on the roof, so that that those couple of slides um that you didn't really have time for in the presentation, I know had some information about the location of solar. Um, so the question here is, is there any scope for locating solar on the north front facing roof of a heritage overlay house? Um, so maybe it's a good, just to um a good chance to kind of look at those slides to answer the the questions.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, we want to, we want to encourage solar panels. We we want people to be installing them on roofs. Um, but what we also need when your building is in a heritage overlay is a kind of demonstration that all options have been considered. So I know that um you and the, sorry, the sustainability officers there at Yara have got good data on the efficiency of solar panels depending on which roof um you put them on. So we prefer that people kind of go through the exercise of ascertaining whether there's another roof that can be used rather than the street facing roof. Um, so preference would be for solar panels to be located at the far rear of the building as much as possible. Um, and even preferably on secondary structures like garages, um so completely off the main building. And then if that's not possible, then we would be looking at, okay, well, how far from the street front can we place the solar panels? Um, and how efficient would it be if we placed them, say, on a west facing roof versus a north facing roof? Um, and then if it can be demonstrated that that's just not going to be an efficient option, um then of course the conversation will be had about whether they should go on the the street facing roof. I guess the point is that um we just need to ensure that all other options were explored um before we, so before we kind of say, yeah, so just put it on the north facing street, fronting roof. Um, the other aspect to consider is whether the solar panels are going on um frames and whether they need to be tilted. Um, because that can change the um, like the the presentation of the roof, that can um detracts from the the original pitch of the roof. Um, and also whether solar panels, that like the number of solar panels and whether they um kind of get, they fit outside of the the frame of the original roof, because that also can alter the appearance of the roof. Um, so yeah, there's actually a lot of things to consider. Um, and I guess the the main thing that we want to see is that um it's it's demonstrated that all these options have um been considered.
Great, thanks Ruth. Yeah, I think that's a really good point that you've made, that it's, we, we are encouraging people to get solar, we want people to get solar. Um, we, there are some other things that you need to take into consideration if it's in a heritage overlay. Um, but there's the guidance online that you can look at and you can always speak to someone in the statutory planning team if you want to get further advice on your um home and your situation.
Hmm.
Um, there's another question. Uh, actually, there's a couple of questions coming through about heating. So um, what's the best type of heating you suggest if gas hydronic is suggested to be phased out? And is it, what, what are your thoughts on wood heating? Is it considered really bad now?
Um, yes, if we're, we we are trying to phase out of gas, um so electricity is definitely preferred. Um, the op, whatever option is least invasive is the preferred option from a heritage perspective. Um, I personally like hydronic heaters that go on the walls. Um, you can mount them, often you can mount them above the skirting so that you're not affecting the original skirting of the, on the building. Um. Sometimes you've got dados like wall panels that um you don't want to impact. Um. Um, the other option is underfloor heating, which a lot of people love, and that's a really nice option as well. Um, and as I mentioned before, that can be retrospectively applied to um floors. You have to take up all of the floors, obviously, to put them under, but it's possible. Um, sorry, what was the other question?
Um, just, the other question was just about wood heating.
Oh, yeah. Um, I mean, yeah, you're just, you're burning carbon dioxide as soon as, that's all. Carbon dioxide that's been sequestered from the atmosphere by the the trees and we're just undoing that work by burning it really. Um, so there are kind of healthier options that you can buy to burn these days as well. As much as I love a fire.
Okay, thanks. Um, we might have one more question now and then we'll move on to our next speaker. Um, John Eric asks, if, are there any case studies of the interfit certification being applied in Melbourne?
Oh, I know that there are definitely case studies in Sydney. Um, I would have to get back to on Melbourne.
Great, thanks. Maybe we can, we um, we might be able to send that as an answer around um to the participants afterward. Um, and someone's just reminding me that the uh, there was a question about slate roofs and solar panels and wondering if we could come back to that. Um, the question was, how do you recommend solar panels are fixed to slate roofs?
Yeah, that's a much harder one. Um. You're probably, so I think in a heritage area, again, it's going to be really important that you can find a location that's more towards the rear because you are going to damage slates. And slates will have to be removed. Um, so it's better that that's done in an area that's less visible and not going to permanently remove contributory fabric, which is at the front of the building, which is arguably one of the most um important areas. But yeah, it it's a hard one on slate because you are going to damage the slates. Um, but yes, good contractors, um. Yeah, there there's ways in which you can detail it um slightly so that battens run across slates. Um, in a way that damages fewer of them as well. Um, but it's a case by case kind of situation. in a way that damages fewer of them as well. Um, but it's a case by case kind of situation.
Thanks. So it sounds like, um, that might be one to get some advice on your individual situation, but it's, it's great to have the, the general answer for everyone.
And if, if it were me, I would be asking, but before, um, engaging a contractor, I'd be asking for evidence of them having done it on previous buildings so that you can be assured that, that they've actually got experience in that area, if that's a particular, um, issue that you've got.
Thanks. That's a really good recommendation. Uh, we'll leave it there with the questions for the first question and answer session and I'll introduce our next speaker. We'll have another, uh, Q and A session at the end of the next speaker. So please feel free to pop any other questions into the Q and A, um, whether they're for Pete, who is our next speaker, or any more questions for Ruth. And we can get, we can have, um, get back to them in the next Q and A session. Pete Mercurio is our second speaker. He is a senior project manager at the Yara Energy Foundation. He has 10 years' experience in energy, energy efficiency and solar. Pete's role at YF, as wear of many hats, includes advising residents about solar, helping residents compare and understand solar quotes and electricity bills, offering advice on home energy efficiency, energy research and managing the Yara Solar Program. The city of Yara is aiming to double the number of households in Yara with solar energy systems from nine percent in 2019 to 18% in 2024. And to do this, we've partnered with the Yara Energy Foundation to take the guesswork out of solar and bring you discounted prices on quality solar energy systems through the Yara Solar Program. To talk more about this and how YF can support Yara Homes in heritage areas to get solar, here's Pete.
Thanks Mel. Uh, appreciate that. Um, and thank you very much for the introduction and thanks Ruth. That was quite insightful. Um, on the, on the slate roofing, because it's fresh. Um, I know a few people in Yara have inquired, uh, to us about slate. And a lot of the solar companies in the market just won't touch it, uh, due to breakage. It's very common in the UK though, so it can be done. I do know of one contractor who will install the framing, but not the solar. Um, so moving on, uh, Yara Energy Foundation, next slide, if that's all right. Um, we're an independent, not-for-profit. We're actually started by the city of, uh, of Yara, uh, 10 years ago now. And at the moment, we're developing that climate emergency plan in consult, in consultation with city of Yara. That's already been done and, and dusted. So now we're acting on that, which is excellent news. So a part of that and part of my work is helping our vulnerable community members, a lot of public housing residents. Um, mostly it's helping them with their, their bills, their electricity bills. So I do encourage anyone, um, to come to me and come to YF if you need some assistance with that. We'll help you search the market for, you know, the cheapest offer or the greenest offer, that is the least, uh, expensive or most affordable. Um, a lot of the other work we do is with businesses across Yara. Um, I helped, uh, Stop In Ground Brewery, which you may know in Collingwood, with their 96 kilowatts of, of solar in their install. Um, we also help businesses out with LED upgrades, uh, energy efficiency assessments as well. So if you know any businesses out there in Yara, um, give them a knock on the shoulder, uh, because there's a solar rebate for businesses coming down the pipeline through Solar Victoria. So we'd really like to see more of our business community jumping on board with solar as well, as they are, you know, I think it's 65%, 70% of Yara's carbon emissions is from business. Um, also helping out with Collingwood Children's Farm, we're able to donate a five kilowatt system to them, which is exciting, exciting for them. And they're about to embark on installing more solar on all their buildings, um, through a grant we, we advised on as well, which is awesome. Um, next slide, please. Thank you. Yep, perfect. So what is the Yara Solar Program? So like I said before, it's a, it's a response to the climate emergency plan. And, and as Mel said, we do want to see a doubling of our solar efforts residentially and commercially across the municipality. Um, so with the Yara Solar Program, you may know that there's a ton of solar companies in the market. There's a lot that are shoddy, there are a lot that are reputable. Um, but here we are at YF, making it simple and easy for the resident to move and transfer into renewable energy future. So we do a lot of the due diligence around these companies. We look at more than 65 points of criteria. We extend on the Clean Energy Council system as well. So there's a lot of processes in place to ensure that, you know, that, that solar, that solar company that you're partnered with is the right company to partner with. Through that process as well, uh, I negotiate about 20 plus percent, uh, in cases off the standard prices through Enviro Group, um, which is excellent. So last year we ran the program as well before COVID hit. About eight months in, we managed to install about 400 kilowatts of solar through the, the initial phase of the solar program, which is amazing, um, really great. And we were hoping to get 100 homes. We fell short at 91 before COVID hit. But that's okay, because we're going to smash that this time round. Um, so yeah, why did we select Enviro Group? Well, Enviro Group, for those that may not know, have been around for quite some time. One of the leaders of solar installs, um, in the country. Um, they have a shop in Northgate High Street that you may or may not have gone to. They have a lot of great information about home energy retrofits that you can do yourself at home, which Ruth touched on with draft proofing, really important in some of our older homes and some of the new builds too, unfortunately. Um, all their products are tier one products rated. That's an international rating scheme. Uh, it's a Bloomberg Financial Rating Scheme. It goes to the financial health of the companies. All the warranties, um, that Enviro Group offer, uh, serviced in-country as well, which is really important. And they do have a, a strong customer service record. And as I said, they're a Clean Energy Council approved solar retailer and installer. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, so how we support you through the program. So I, I know I'm rushing it, but there's more information to come. That's more applicable and I'm conscious of time. Um, I won't go too much into heritage overlay as we've gone through that pretty, pretty substantially. Um, but we'll, we'll be on hand to advise you as to where to place those panels, as will Enviro Group. Um, it's good to know Germany has one of the highest instances of solar penetration. And obviously their orientation is flipped, so the southern side is preferable. Um, but that's the equivalent to our southern aspects here in Australia. So that goes to show that just because you can't fit in the north, doesn't mean it's not the right thing to do. Um, yeah, and also that website there, um, the Compare Energy website, it's really important. If you know any, um, pensioners particularly, um, tell them to go and use that website. They'll get $250, uh, sent to them, uh, via check in the mail just to use the website. They don't even have to change retailers. And if you need any assistance, go to that website. There's lots of compare energy websites on the market. That's a bit government one. Um, so you know that the deals aren't being bought to place you on top of the list, uh, when you're going through that. Uh, next slide, please. This is pretty, pretty basic, pretty simple. I won't go into too much detail. However, what is important to know about when you're installing solar? Um, if you're not at home, you want to maximize some of the energy using equipment that you have in the home at that time. So for example, you want to run your dishwasher, uh, during the morning. So wait, wait the following day when it's all fully stocked and use it then. You might want to use your heating and cooling as well on timers, say from two o'clock to four, four o'clock. Um, that's a great way of maximizing your solar, uh, system and the energy you're producing, uh, by yourself and for free. So it's really important to do that. Um, next slide, please. Next slide will show, uh, the prices for the Yara Solar Program. There it is. Perfect. That's great. Okay, so these are the indicative solar quotes. You might find, uh, they'll be altered when you get the quote depending on your circumstances, but these are the prices not including the, uh, Solar Victoria rebate of $1,850. Um, the other option there, of course, is the no interest loan of $1,850 as well. Um, that is probably going to decrease in the next few months, but not by a huge amount, I wouldn't have thought. Um, but with those rebates, it really takes the, the cost of your system down, um, significantly. So you're probably looking at a payback with the rebate of around three years. It's not very long. And if you change your behaviors and maximize your solar system, you can even reduce that further. Um, not to mention, you know, a bit of cash flow when, when, when and once it's installed. Um, next slide, please. All of this information is on our website too, by the way. Um, just a quick, uh, batteries, batteries are kind of the flavor of the month, I suppose. Um, and as you can see from the prices, they are still quite dear. One of the problems we have in Yara is not only, um, location of panels, but locations of batteries. Um, they're big, big enough to make it almost impossible in most houses to, to install. You do need some space around your house for a battery. Um, at YF at the moment, we've been working pretty hard about, uh, neighborhood batteries. And we've developed a partnership with City Power to roll out, uh, neighborhood batteries all across Yara. So it's really exciting. Uh, I can't say too much about it just yet, um, because it's happening at the moment. Um, but I guarantee you, once it's in, um, you won't need to worry about buying your own personal battery. We'll be able to share batteries. So let's move to the next slide, please, Cal. Great. So these are some of the eligibility requirements, um, that Solar Victoria, which is the government entity administering, administering these, uh, rebates, have. So the property must be valued at less than three million, combined household income of less than 180,000, um, as well as being an owner occupier and do not have an existing system. It's now opened up to renters as well, um, this rebate. So it's worthwhile having a chat with your landlord to see if you can agree to installing solar. If your landlord's nice, we can do it pretty quickly. Um, that interest loan of four years works out to be about $39 a month. Um, and with the savings that you get from solar, uh, you'll fast surpass that $39 payment. There's also a solar hot water rebate, um, available. Um, you can't get both, unfortunately. It's one or the other. Um, yeah, next slide, please. Awesome. So what to do next? Um, the best thing, I think, with running these programs, it's not just the, the amount of kilowatts installed through a program. It's actually you, the resident, getting an understanding of how much solar will cost you, um, with a quote, but also how much it'll save you. So it's worth, it's worth getting a free no obligation quote, um, just to see. And you can do that by registering your details, uh, on our website, www.yf.org.au or you can call that number. It's direct to me and we can have a chat about your needs. Um, Enviro Group will then contact you in about five days, three to five days. Um, they'll ask for a bill and talk about product that they have as well. Um, any questions about that quote, feel free to give us a call. We're, we're impartial, we're independent. Although we have working, uh, we are working with Enviro Group. If you're not satisfied with that quote, we can seek others, um, to fit the bill. But obviously when we go to others, we can't get that additional 20% discount that we're able to negotiate for these programs. Um, then if you're satisfied with that, head to Solar Victoria. Um, they'll require a few bits of information, um, to upload to their portal. Uh, it's usually a rates notice, um, your driver's license photo and a proof of income. So maybe just a tax assessment notice as well. Um, it does say there, when you, when you, when you obviously pay the deposit, it takes about 10 weeks. That's come, come down quite a lot. That 10 week delay is due to the amount of solar being put on roofs all across Victoria. So there's a huge shortage of not only installers, but also independent inspectors. And that happens three weeks after the install roughly. Um, there's a bit of a glug, uh, in that wait time at the moment, but it is, it is still around three, three weeks. And that 10 weeks of install timeframe has come down to about eight weeks. Um, but Enviro Group will give you a, a better estimate, um, once they provide that quote to you. Um, next slide, please. So you may have heard, um, on the interwebs and, uh, a few news articles about, um, homes, you, homes being hit by, uh, export limitations. So what that means is whatever solar energy you're producing and aren't using, uh, gets sent back onto the grid and you get paid. Now, historically, you would get paid, 10 years ago, you would be getting paid a huge amount, 77, what, 66 cents plus some change, uh, per kilowatt hour. Um, that's steadily reduced over time. Um, it was five cents for a period last year. It's back up to around 10 and a half cents. Um, there was talk that there was going to be, you were going to be charged. I don't think that's going to happen, so I wouldn't worry about that. Um, but any, any, even with the 10 cents and sending it back onto the grid, it's not going to make a huge difference to how much you're going to save in terms of your payback. Um, it's still available. We're working with City Power to improve that, uh, and it is improving. So the reason for that is, uh, there's too much energy being poured onto the grid at one time. So it's about regulating that flow of voltage, uh, through the poles and wires. So that's one of the reasons why these neighborhood batteries are really important, really effective in upgrading our grid with a community centric, um, uh, thought behind it. So it's really important that these neighborhood batteries get out there in the ether. Um, but we've got a great partner now with City Power who are, um, who believe in our common message and common goals. So we, we see that network, uh, issue of that limitations in exports, um, only going to reduce. So don't feel too concerned about it. Um, a lot of the time when Enviro Group pushed the paperwork off to City Power to connect it to the grid, um, they're finding it's not as big of an issue as it was maybe six months ago. Um, and again, it's a case by case basis, but you will find out, um, in good time before having to make that decision as well. Uh, and as I said, you want to maximize your, your, your solar, uh, and the energy you're producing. So really that behavior change is really important and, um, connecting all your appliances to when that solar is producing your energy is definitely the way to, to think about solar working for you. So yeah, it's called to action here. Please join up, uh, register for free quote at our website. Um, that would be great. If you need any bill assistance, again, go to the website, uh, throw in your details or just give me a call. The community battery, like I said, really exciting. We'll probably have a few announcements in the coming, uh, weeks and months. Um, we also have a, a webinar, um, coming up with a group called Lighter Footprints, um, based in the Burundara area. Um, great group, um, really getting, getting on board. So I believe that's in June, July. Um, more details of that is on our website, which is great. We're also working with the business community to aggregate, um, all of our smaller businesses into, uh, sort of like a power purchase agreement where we buy into, you know, a wind farm or solar farm, things like that. So there's a lot going on. Um, it's hard to keep up, uh, sometimes. It's pretty fast paced and dynamic space that we're all working in. Um, but like I said, if you even just want to have a chat about the energy market and where it's placed, we're here to, here to talk to you through that as well. Uh, next slide, please. And yeah, that's it for me. I hope I covered everything. I didn't want to talk too quickly, but, um, um, that's, uh, that's pretty much the short and skinny of the Yara Solar Program. We have a really exciting, uh, announcement coming up where anyone who participates in our programs and actually purchases solar, um, goes through, we, we provide a donation to community groups, um, for participants in the program. So, uh, our last year's, uh, solar program, which got up to about 400 kilowatts. For every 100 kilowatts, we donate one kilowatt. So there's a full kilowatt system going in. Pretty soon, I can't announce just yet, because I know Mel will want to do that in due course, but we're excited to do that. Um, a lot of our programs across the state have led to some of these community groups, um, staying in business. So it's really important we get behind, uh, those that can't afford, uh, solar or, or transitioning to a renewable energy future. Uh, that's it for me. Uh, over to you, Mel. Thanks.
Thanks so much, Pete. Uh, that was great to hear all about the Yara Solar Program and the other great work that YF is doing. Um, we've got a few more questions coming through. Uh, there's a question here from Marcus. How can you determine if your heritage roof can handle the additional weight of solar panels?
Uh, Marcus, it depends on the roof, I suppose. Depends on the tiling. Typically, um, there isn't an issue with tiled roofs when you're putting solar in terms of weight. Um, it's spread pretty well across that space as well and they're not overly heavy. So I wouldn't worry about it. There's always engineers working behind the scenes to make sure, um, that the numbers stack up. And yeah, it's not a major concern. I've never, um, witnessed, uh, well, maybe one or two occasions, but it's not tiled roofs. It's probably, um, really poor quality tin roofs. Um, and obviously as we discussed, slate will always crack, most likely crack. Um, so yeah, it's, the weight isn't so big of a, of an issue when it comes to solar.
Thanks, Pete. There's another question here about the community battery that you've mentioned, Pete. Um, the question is, uh, it's more of a comment, that sounds great about group batteries or community batteries. When can we expect that? And maybe just before you jump into any more information about that, Pete, I'll just mention that there's the link that we've shared in the chat to past webinar recordings. If you visit that link, you'll also see, uh, recent, a recording of a recent webinar that, um, YF did in conjunction with Yara City Council about community batteries. So you can hear about that program through that recorded webinar and I'll hand over to you, Pete, if there's anything else you want to say about that.
No, I think that's a, thanks Mel. That's actually a really great starting point for anyone who's interested to learn more, um, of the function and role of community batteries and where we're placed in terms of rolling out and delivering those. Um, look, it's a, it's a long road. We've been, we've been working on that for about eight months to a year now. Um, and made some great strides. Um, that's all I can speak about at the moment. Um, just because we're waiting on a few things. Um, but, uh, it would be one of the first instances in the country of an urban, um, shared battery as well. Um, so we have really high expectations, um, and we're looking forward to, to delivering on that.
Thanks, Pete. And we probably have time for one more question. This, I believe, is a question for Ruth. Um, if you have a limited budget, what are the things that you would do first to have the most impact?
Hmm, um, a limited budget. Deal with your draft proofing. Um, so put the new seals in your existing windows. Um, and put like the, that rubber corking in your, um, timber floors, if you've got timber floors. Um, if you've got the funds, I would, um, insulate my floor and ceilings, um, because that won't require taking all the, the plaster. Um, because that won't require taking all the the plaster off internally or the weatherboards off externally. But if you've got the money, then I would also insulate the walls.
Yeah, just on that, actually, Ruth, it's I, I, I believe it's about fifty-five uh, dollars per square meter to um, reinstall your plaster if you remove it.
Yeah.
Roughly.
Great, thanks, Ruth. Uh, we'll leave it there with the Q and A, because we're coming to the end of our session. So if you have a question that hasn't been answered yet, please get in touch with the city of yours statutory planning team. Or if you have questions about solar or the Yera Solar Program, please get in touch with YF. So I'd like to extend a big thank you to our speakers, Ruth Redden from Context GML and Pete Mercurio from the Yera Energy Foundation. And thank you to everyone for joining us tonight. For more information, you'll see a bunch of links on your screen now, and these will also be sent around to you by email after the event. So for more information about the Yera Solar Program, you can visit the YF website. Um, or for more information about all of the great work that Ruth is doing, can visit the Context website. And to learn about a hundred percent renewable Yera and what the city of Yera is doing, you can visit the yera-city.vic.gov.au/renewableyera. Um, that link that we've shared in the chat to past webinar recordings is also listed here and you'll receive that by email. And the link to finding out about installing solar in a heritage overlay with the updated guidance. Um, we have another webinar coming up in a couple of weeks, which is solar for renters and landlords. So if you're interested in that topic, um, you can register through that link. And for any planning-related inquiries, uh, please contact the statutory planning team. The details are on your screen and you'll also receive them in that email. So when you log off, you'll see an email in your inbox with these links as well as a quick survey. So we'd love to have your feedback on this session. Thanks again for joining us tonight. Have a great evening and we hope to see you again soon.
Thanks, Mel.
Thanks, Mel.
Bye. Thanks, Ruth. Thanks, Pete.